I'm gonna mention that when I talk. Ready for us? We'll scan it. Yeah, thank you.
Must be you.
What's that?
Must be you.
Uh.
Yeah, you can just quieten. Got me here.
Ethics. Policy acknowledgement.
Okay, Peter, we all ready to go?
Dave, ready?
We're ready.
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay. Call the meeting of the Delta Township Planning Commission for June ninth, twenty twenty five to order. Everyone, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to your love and for its stance. One day stand up. I'm not a cat. The need is to follow. With liberty being touched as well.
Mr. Secretary, will you call the room?
Chair Doug Kuzinski.
Here.
Vice Chair Marietta Hunter Proctor.
Present.
Bob Weldon present. Wendy Bradley.
Present.
Michael Madoff.
Mike is not your choice.
Absent. Mark Mudry.
Here.
Bob McConnell.
Present.
Rachel Elsinger.
Present.
David Howell.
Here.
We have a quote. Excellent.
Uh, next item is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discretion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Agenda is approved. Uh, approval of the minutes from our May twelfth, twenty twenty five. Uh, meeting of the planning commission. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Move the minutes?
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, we have no correspondence. We have no old business. We have no public hearings. Which takes us to item nine uh on the agenda, other business. Uh, specifically a special land use permit. Mr. Secretary, if you could.
Uh, this is a public hearing. The special use permits, public hearing, so it was added under the wrong item.
Okay.
But this is a public hearing tonight.
Yeah, uh, this is a public hearing. Uh, to consider a special land use permit. Number P S L twenty twenty five dash zero 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 two. From E N N Auto Solutions. To establish a new vehicle repair facility. At six ten Elmwood Road. Parcel number zero four zero dash zero four seven. Dash three zero zero dash zero two zero dash zero zero. David?
Thank you. So, uh, before the planning mission tonight, we have a special ladies permit request for a auto repair facility. The property is located on the southeast corner of Elmwood and Saginaw Highway. Uh.
Keep up the site map, please. Just to show the location.
So we have Saginaw Highway, Elmwood. Southeast corner. Um, the businesses that front Saginaw Highway are gonna be Goodyear. Uh, Wild Bill's Tobacco, Wayback Burger, first some highlights, there's others in this building. Um, the applicant is requesting the S L U P at what's known as six ten Elmwood. Which is in this back portion right here, it's accessed through the rear of the property. It's approximately about three thousand square feet in size. Um. To the north, we have a commercial use, uh, Firestone, Bowing. To the south is a multifamily residential. Uh, area which is right here and more strip commercial. To the east is commercial and to the west is commercial. The size of the parcel is approximately one point four four acres. Uh, the complete size of the building is a little over eighteen thousand square feet. There are ninety-two existing parking spaces. The properties, the building's been there since nineteen fifty-nine. And front Saginaw Highway, Saginaw Highway with two hundred and nine feet and Elmwood with twenty-two feet. The Elmwood frontage is right here. I would like to note that the parcel to the left, which is comprised Goodyear, is commonly owned. By the same landlord, so there is a lot of share to get. Interest egress through that. Uh, when looking at the parking, there's no specific standards for vehicle repair. We'd asked the applicant to provide parking study with um the. Uh, existing tenants, which was included in the packet. Um, with that, they provided the site plan, so you can kind of get a general idea of the parking lot situation. Uh. Quality wise, with the proposed vehicle repair service, they're estimating they need approximately eighty-seven spaces. Uh, to meet our minimum standards, there are currently ninety-two existing on site. Uh, staff is agreeable with uh this assessment. Looking at the standards, uh. For the S L U P, there's two different sections that we need to review. The first is section seven point oh three. The general standards of approval. Uh, number one is compatibility compatibility with the comprehensive plan. Uh, twenty thirteen comprehensive plan recommends commercial uses at this location. With a stated goal for commercial areas along West Saginaw Highway to reduce vacancies. By attracting new businesses and current infill and ensure compatibility with adjacent residential uses in regard to lighting, traffic noise and landscaping. Compatibility with adjacent uses, special land use shall be constructed, operated and maintained so as to be compatible with existing or intended character of the general vicinity. And so as not to change the central character of the area in which it is posed. The subject property is located north of a multifamily. District, that's the only really area which could be um considered. Um. For a possible use that's not necessarily compatible. However, this building's been here since the seventies. Goodyear's been in that existing space for a very long time. I'm not sure exactly when um they established there. The use of vehicle repair facility has been known and accepted in this area. We've not received any complaints from residents about access noise, light and things of that nature. Um, it's in my opinion that one more vehicle repair facility in that area is likely gonna go unnoticed with. All the um activity with that Saginaw Highway brains and the existing vehicle repair facility on the premise. Impact over all environment is one of the things we consider. In this case, it's really gonna happen. Um, we're talking about uh existing facilities, there's no outside where it being proposed. Everything new is gonna happen in this suite. Uh, traffic impact, again, it's gonna be minimal um. Uh, right now, Brian is only, um, does not have any employees and his space is very limited. There's really only space for about four or five bays. Or not really bays, but areas to put cars, so about four or five interior vehicles in inside. Uh, he stated in his narrative that he plans to grow, but as of right now, it is a small shop. Um, operational char- characteristics of of the use, again, it's gonna be very similar to what's currently. On site with Goodyear. Um, outdoor operations, Brian understands that um as right now, nothing's been proposed to be outdoors. Nothing is going to be accepted outdoors. Any dismantled or wrecked vehicles need to be kept inside. And only street legal vehicles can be parked uh for extended period of time in that rear yard. Um, noise with zoning, other zoning standards, um, we see no issues with um. That being met. Um, and then the special land use approval requirements goes into section eight point six one, which is the specific use standards for vehicle repair. Uh, the zoning warrants requires access be off a primary road. Primary roads are going to be Saginaw Highway and Elmwood in this situation. So actually has two uh access points to meet that standard. Outdoor storage, again, uh, we've made it quite clear and he has agreed that no outdoor storage is to occur. Um, there is the ability for us to require screening, but in this case, because there's no outdoor storage, um. No additional screening is being recommended. Uh, disposable containers, uh, none are being proposed, there's existing trash facility for this uh. Whole site on the southeast corner of the property. Um, Brian has said that basically, you know, he's such small scale that for use oil and stuff like that, he's. Collecting that in containers and taking it offsite to dispose of. Uh, repair maintenance activities, including hydraulic hoists, lubrication pins and similar activity shall be performed entirely within a closed building. Um, he understands this, there aren't going to be a lubrication pit. Uh, he does have a a small hoist uh installed in the building right now. Um. Right yard setback restrictions aren't going to be an issue, the whole, everything is being accessed through the rear of the property. Vehicle sales and leasing, he's not proposing any sales or leasing right now. Uh, the following prohibited uses are not being proposed at site. Or on site. Um. Are there any questions?
I have one question. Um, this establishment cannot be seen from either Elmwood or Saginaw Avenue. Is there any provision or any plans for signage?
Uh, he would be allowed um. A sign or a space on a signage if if the property owner is agreeable. Actually, the s- this uh strip mall lost its sign in that last major storm we had, so right now, there's no. Tenant sign, which I understand that the property owner is working to um get something up there for the tenants.
Mr. Mudry.
Now, David, uh, this is zone commercial right now.
Correct.
Okay, what business or type of business was in there before?
Uh, we don't track businesses uh per se, we don't have business permits. I do know that there is some sort of wedding um. Business, and I don't think downs, but.
Uh, planning?
It's kind of like if you rent thing, you know, rent decorations for weddings and stuff like that. Uh, but I think throughout the years, it's it's been a few things.
Okay, and I made mention of a hoist. Okay, is this a permanent hoist or is this a temporary hoist?
Uh, I believe it's permanent. I visited the interior of the site and it it's installed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Is there? Is there a customer door? To that facility?
Um.
At all?
Yeah, the door is gonna be right there. So that, so that's the main door that the car is coming.
Back of the property.
Yeah, back of the property.
So there is the, there is nothing for?
No, it's complete, uh, the the whole business is gonna be in the rear of the building.
What is that multi-unit? Uh, what, is that an apartment complex, the residential in the southeast corner?
Yes.
Do you know what? What it's, what's it called? Is it?
Uh, the exact name escapes me right now, I could um. Find out for you if you.
So it butts up right against that, doesn't it? Is there a fence? Cause I thought I read something.
Yeah, there's a existing six-foot fence there.
Okay. So they do. They've always seen what they're looking at right now.
There's minimal screening, um.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Hey, any further questions or observations? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? If so, please approach the podium and give your name and address.
Yeah, I think we need a motion to open the public hearing.
Yeah.
We can make a comment. Who to open a public hearing?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So anybody that would like to comment on this, any further questions from? The commission? Okay, if not.
Mr. Chair, I don't know who comments on it.
Excuse me.
Please approach the.
I just thought we would introduce ourselves.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah. So, um, uh, my name's Pam and I'm one of the, my family is the owner of the property. And I have with me Brian, who is the tenant.
Yeah, if we could have your full name and address for the record.
Sure, uh, Pamela Gillespie. My home address?
Please.
Okay, um, three three nine Wallbridge Drive. East Lansing, Michigan.
Thank you.
Um, and then Brian is, Brian, how do you say your last name?
Leon Castro.
Leon Castro, who is the tenant. Um, who's has is um his space, and then next to him is Cody. Who we have hired um Wolverine Engineering to do the site plan and we've been working with them too. And that's my husband, so that's it. But I just wanted to introduce ourselves to, so you would know who we are.
Thank you.
It'll be nice.
Anything further?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There was a, yeah, one of their provisions, I think. Limited. Uh, auctions. Yep. In this thing. But I thought the applicant made reference to auction. And right, he.
Uh, a part of his business, I believe, is that he purchases cars at auction to repair.
Fix.
So he's not, so the the standard prohibits auctions from happening on site.
He can take them somewhere though.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to get it clarified, thank you.
Where, can I, where would those sales occur at? Can we have the applicant or the representative approach, please?
Please give us your name and your address, please.
Your name, Leon Castro. Address is sixteen twenty-eight Leo Goo Drive, uh, Road, Hope, Michigan.
Thank you. So Dave, have you gone over the conditions of approval with the applicant? Where would the sale, so you're repairing cars that you buy at auction?
Correct.
Where, and then you sell them, where do those sales happen?
I put them on Facebook and I sell out of my house.
Okay.
Uh, I do no sales out of there, I just work on my vehicles that I purchase and customer vehicles as well.
Thanks, I just wanted the the commission to get an idea of what what you're doing there.
Do you just use that as grad space to to perform the work that's necessary to prepare the project?
Correct, yes. And I'm, I did it at first to work on my own vehicles and then I took the advantage and started working on other customers' vehicles. So I expect to, you know, expand if I can. Um, but with with all, I gotta get permits and all that for myself as well for mechanic work.
And as I read, I'm sorry, as I read the document. Uh, it was uh ma- gonna maintain the status quo in terms of what you're doing. And any. Alterations to that, any changes to that, you're gonna come back and discuss.
Percentage, yes, correct.
What are your business hours?
Um, from nine till six. Uh, to drop off, I wish it could be earlier, so I could get out a little bit earlier. But I have my kids, I gotta drop off at school by eight thirty, so.
And that's Monday through Friday?
Yeah.
And then on the weekends, you're not?
I I work on Saturdays, but I just finish up any work that I have or didn't finish on Fridays.
Okay, so if I was.
Not open to public.
If I was a customer coming to get service, I'd enter through that back door?
Correct.
Okay.
And I have drawn some lines and uh. So. Where, you know, if you know where you're walking into, you you don't, won't, won't come over here to the bay area. Uh, just so you know, like, safety wise and all of that.
Thank you.
Good. Any more questions?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, any further discretion?
David, if I recall correctly, there's not a lot of space back there for a lot of movement of vehicles. Correct, it seems like. I ended up back there by mistake once. Hmm. And there's not a lot of space for a lot of.
There's.
Well, there's several parking spaces.
I don't see only ninety-two parking spaces.
That coal there is not. Forty spaces includes.
Right, all around.
Oh, yeah. That includes the Wayback Burger.
That, it doesn't count the twenty-five.
And there are down salons.
Yeah.
That is, but the front, yes, remember, it's Goodyear, Wayback Burger.
But Goodyear.
Now, salon.
So this part is Goodyear, there's.
It's not included in the.
Yeah, they are parking for themselves. The ninety-two spaces are specifically for the parking on um this property.
Hmm. Ninety-two?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Anything further? Move to close the public hearings.
Support.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Uh, the commission will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. I move that the planning commission recommend to the Delta Township Board of Trustees approval of the special land use permit. Requests from E N N Auto Solutions to establish a vehicle repair facility. At six one zero Elmwood Road, being parcel number zero four zero. Zero four seven. Three zero 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 two zero zero zero. As described in case P S L twenty twenty five dash zero 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 two. For the following reasons, of which there are three, and subject to the ten conditions as listed in the document dated for today.
Support.
Moved and supported, this is just voice vote, right? We don't.
We'll call for decisions for.
Be called for that, so. Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rita Hunt?
Yes.
Proctor? Bob Weldon, yay? Wendy Bradley?
Yes.
Mike Meadow is absent, Mark Mudry?
Yes.
Mr. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Elsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
The ice tap?
Yeah, David. So what just happened was only a recommendation to the township board, the township board will have the final deciding power. Uh, that'll be on next week's agenda, the sixteenth, right here at six P M.
Is that the last step?
That would be the last step.
Outside, well, then building permits.
Yeah, then building. Thanks for your.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the twenty twenty-five master plan update.
I'll take that one. So, um, the master plan is cruising along, it's June already. We've had a couple of the com- um, steering committee meetings, and I thank those that are on this group. So Vice Chair Hunt Proctor, Chair Kuzinski and Commissioner Elsinger are all on the steering committee. So, um, I think we've had two of those meetings, I've had a lot of meetings with a consultant outside of that. Um, they submitted a draft of the existing conditions portion of the plan. So the first part of the document, it's kind of a inventory of community facilities. And kind of a where, where are we now? And then it teases a little bit, kind of where the plan is going, it identifies some development air, priority development areas. So we're in the um, right now reviewing that draft, so the steering committee is reviewing draft. Fall, their next steering committee meeting is June, I think, twenty-fifth. So following that meeting, and once the consultant's able to update that draft based on feedback from the steering committee. Uh, I'll plan on sharing that with the entire commission. For just um, for for input, for discussion. Um, and then we'll have at least tackled that part of it. They are working right now, and we had the consultant at the last township board meeting last week. Uh, detailing the uh community engagement, public engagement strategy. And I'll summarize it briefly, it's. Two um, large-scale, open, public meetings. First one of which is gonna be August fifth at the Delta Township Library. We're gonna carve out a few hours there. The, and the whole point of the first meeting will be really to get eyes on the process and the plan. There's not, there won't be a lot of things to to provide feedback on at that point. But there will be an opportunity to gather contact information. And start to push out what will be a community survey. That will be available in multiple formats, um, well. Multiple digital formats, I mean, we can accommodate a paper copy if we have to, but. It will be online, it'll be on your phone, different ways that you can get, it can actually complete it. And um, but it would also just be collecting information like, yeah, yes, I wanna sign up for more updates on the master plan kind of thing. And we can talk in broad strokes about the community. So that's all gonna have a lot more meat on the bone when we get there. I'm working on just kind of reserving places to have those meetings. So one in, and the community, open house meeting in August, there'll be another one in November. In between there, we'll do three focus group meetings with as as up to thirty people in each of these focus group meetings, they're all gonna focus on different aspects. So health and wellness, transportation and something else, but the, of the three categories. Everybody fits into one of the three. So they'll have those focus groups that are gonna drill down and ask some questions. I think the other one is economic development. And then, so community survey, two open houses, three community, three focus group meetings is the plan for public engagement. Um, we're looking at having that second open house at the mall in November at some point, so I've gotta get the details on that. One of the focus groups would be at the enrichment center. And the other two will probably be here at the township. So just the logistics of all that's happening right now. Uh, I'm satisfied with the process, the board seemed supportive of the public engagement strategy at the last, maybe we had the meeting last week. And I'm really pleased with the consultant team that we've assembled. So, um, yeah, we're just gonna keep moving forward, we'll keep this group in the loop as we go. And I'll be counting on everybody to put some critical eyes on these documents as we get further along. There's gonna be a lot bigger, I know it's tough, cause we're not, it's not here in front of you yet, but there's gonna be a lot of big discussions about. Policy and land use and where we see the direction of this township going. It's a conversation that's long overdue, as you know, the master plan is from twenty thirteen, so a lot of thoughts changed since then. Um, and, you know, there's gonna be a lot of differing opinions on kind of where people see the future of the community going, it's been a long time since anyone asked. So, um, I'm really excited about it, it's great. Um, so far, so any questions about the process or the where we're going, the the strategy in general?
Mr. Chair? Um. Director Manser?
Yes.
Um, is this master plan looking ahead five years or ten years?
Ten.
Ten.
Yeah, ten to twenty is the idea.
Hmm.
So, yeah. But the, wh- when we get in some of the growth ser- scenarios, that actually projects population, I think, up to forty years. So we, there's, there's a couple of different scenarios that will, that will show you, it's kind of like a. A no growth, low growth, high growth, and then within that, there are some parameters too. So the the demographic information that the consultant is putting together, which is, I mean frankly, kind of above me right now. In terms of complexity and the the data that they have access to that we that we don't yet. Um, is gonna look at a pretty broad spectrum of population growth scenarios based on a number of different factors. So it's, it's not just an immediate land use, it's, it's definitely looking to the future as well.
You know, Mr. Chair, do you know, uh. How they are segmenting the population in terms of. Uh, demographics? Is it like business, it's not business, or do you know?
Um, the, what I have seen so far is just the community as a whole. I haven't seen a breakdown that I remember a- about either. Uh, yeah, we've looked at just kind of raw population data. So far, there are definitely economic aspects to it. Um, they're, they're able to walk us through a little bit, and I I just don't have it all memorized yet. Um, but they'll be able to show us kind of who's coming into the community. How many people work here, how many people live here, how many people live and work here, how many people are traveling out for work? So there's gonna be a lot of breakdown in in that kind of information. So there's gonna be a lot of breakdown in, in that kind of information.
Probably something on each.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, they'll have the whole breakdown of demographics, everything.
Yeah, gender, all that is.
Yeah.
In there.
The other question I had is. The, uh. What is the plan? For outreach to shore awareness? Of the meetings.
So what we'll do is, I, everything's pretty reliant on social media these days and through the township website, so it'll be. The township has social media through Facebook and social media through whatever other social media. I'm not so, sorry, I don't mean to deride it. I'm not a social media person. Um. Although I'm realizing the rest of the world is. The, we have our Talk of the Township, Dalton Magazine. The, the publications, the township has an email blast system too. Um. Those are the big ones that we're gonna rely on. And then I'll do a roadshow at some point. We've talked about. Talking to community groups around the area. For example, I already go to the chamber meetings, so we've been. Talking about it at the chamber meetings, but any other opportunity like Rotary, other groups that. Um, might be interested in having me or me and the consultant. Would, would, we do that route as well.
Anything further? Thank you, uh, Peter.
Thanks.
Next item, uh, of business. Our proposed changes to the capital improvements program.
Okay, I'll take that as well. So, um. I became director not quite a year ago, last July. Uh, I, I think it was interim in April and full, um, director in July after Gary retired. And one thing we've been really trying to do is kind of right-size our workflow and we'll create workflows in some cases, but also try to streamline our processes. Um. Providing robust reviews, but also trying to streamline the, what we do. We don't have a big, you're looking at our team. Sarah's here part-time. Um, but we get a lot of projects. I mean, just in the last week, we've, we've got a lot of stuff going on. So one aspect of this is the core, is the. Capital improvements program is something that planning department has shepherded through our system. It is comprised of mostly Dave over the last several years has been managing that process. And it encompasses him. Putting the word out to all departments. They prepare their capital, their plan for capital improvement, so it's really, it's a list of projects. And then the process has been different i- in different times, probably depending on who is here wo- working on it, but. Um, th- this last time around, Dave provided a pretty. I don't know if that rings in my head or if it's in the microphones. We had the last meeting in this room, the microphones were buzzing like crazy, so. I think I'm part of it is in my head, but, um, the, so. It, it's quite a lot of work on staffs and to compile the projects. It goes out to our departments. They prepare the materials, and then Dave created a pretty sophisticated ranking system. That is used to kind of prioritize the projects. So we don't necessarily plan on changing that particular aspect of it, but something I've talked to the manager about, and I have it on the. Um, work session scheduled with the township board next week. Is to, there is a provision that would allow the. Government to re, um. What's the word I'm looking for here? Move the authority for the C I P from planning commission to the manager's office. And then the manager would take the C I P, the documents from the departments, and it would become part of the budget. I am an advocate for this process because, one, it would save some time on our end. Um, we wouldn't have to schedule the meeting with the planning commissioners. And it just ends up being kind of an issue for us from a workload perspective, scheduling the meeting. And pulling the items together and these, and applying the ranking criteria. In another version of this process, the departments could create their documents, submit to the manager's office. And then those conversations about the financial aspects of the capital improvements projects that are planned by each department would happen during the budget process. Really, what I'm proposing is aligning the budget process with the C I P. And I have, um, propose a different. As, I, I don't want to lose the playing commission review of, of the C I P projects because they're, it's important. However, there is another tool in the C I P, well, in the Planning Enabling Act, that the township has not historically done, which we're a little. Um. Deficient on frankly, is, uh, what's called a section sixty-one review that looks at the projects for location, character and extent. Uh, in my time, so again, I, I'm not the expert on this, but I have an experience that I wanted to share with everybody. When I worked at Meridian Township, so I was there for fifteen years in varying levels of responsibility in the playing department. And early on, fairly early on in our tenure, we made that change to, um, move the responsibility from the playing commission to the manager's office. For this exact reason. It made a lot more sense to align those discussions about cost for the projects with the budget process. However, Meridian also had a robust, I mean, the, then I think to set the stage a little bit too, is Delta Township has a very robust budget process. The C I P. Um, is in a very important process, but it's definitely more important in some more rural, and I don't mean any offense by like less sophisticated. Governments that don't have as robust process of we, as we do. Because they, it's, it's an exercise to get communities to think about what projects are coming, how much they're gonna cost. And it's really, it's a, a vehicle and a structure to have those conversations. We have those conversations every day, all the time. So it would make sense from a strategic, um, strategy perspective to align those things with the budget. So all those happen at the same time in the budget. The directors could have those one-on-one conversations with the manager about dollars and cents. And which is even more relevant now, and we can talk a little bit about, um, the police initiative later, but you're all, I think, all aware. That that's, you know, there's a temper or a, a structure, a framework for a deal. But, um, there is a keen eye on the budget, I guess is the bottom line to that. Meridian Township employed. What's called the section sixty-one review. And it is a process whereby for every item on the capital improvements plan. Those would come in front of the planning commission for a review, not based on the finances necessarily, but on the location of the project. The character of the project and the extent, and I can get you more information on, on what that means to you. You would have, um, still a review of the projects on the list. But instead of looking at them and ranking them based on priority from a financial perspective. It would be more about, is this the right project in the right place? Is it appropriate for where it's being proposed? Does it align with the master plan? In my mind, that are, that is. Far more relevant and useful for the commissioner and for the township to have an eye on that. Versus, um, the other discussion that's kind of happening right now with the C I P. So that's where we would like to move with this. And I wanted to get that on your radar. One, I wanted to talk to you about it before it shows up on a board agenda, just out of respect to this group. But two, I'm convinced that that's the right way to handle these projects, and I think it actually gives you a better look at the projects. Um. And a better opportunity to provide feedback that we. To use this group for, I think, what the strengths are, is looking at the project and determining the appropriateness and how it relates to the master plan. We'll have a lot more beef in the master plan. Down the road when this project is completed by the end of the year, when the new master plan's done, but it'll, it's still, um, we still have enough. In the master plan now for projects were proposed in the meantime. So I don't know if there's any feedback on that generally.
Just, uh, said I would support that move. Uh, certainly, the, you know, there's a greater expertise and knowledge about the budget within, uh, where it would go. Uh. But more importantly, I think, is it would allow this body. To maintain its focus on what our primary. Task is in planning. Uh, whenever it's been presented before, it's inevitable. That somehow in your head, you manage to kind of mash together the, the numbers and the, and the other. I think we ultimately get a better product if the commission focuses on, as you said. What is it? Okay, how will it be done? How does it relate to other things? How will it change the entire character of the, the township? You know, if you're gonna do development and inevitably it involves changes in property use and that sort of thing. So we can focus on that. And ultimately then it gets synthesized. And both are given. Uh. The appropriate weight at the time of a final decision as opposed to, like I said, something that just sort of. Happens throughout the process. That you're keeping the numbers and the budget in the back of your mind. Well, let the budget people do their thing. And we can do our thing and say, this is good, that. Or indifferent for the character of the township going forward. It's my feeling. Anyone else?
I concur. Yeah, I've been on that committee for a couple of times and. To me, it seems like the people who are closest to it would know whether or not. You know. It should be there or not, in terms of the budget.
If I could speak to how this might manifest on your agendas, if there's, um, a. Public project, so it could be anything from a new park to the extension of, of sewer water main. Uh, township purchasing property. I don't think we're gonna do that, but we could. Um, building a new park facility, a new water maintenance building, stuff like that. Any new public, typically I hear five thousand dollars. Typically, any public expenditure. Uh, this, uh, infrastructure. Uh, new street, stuff like that, not, uh, not every purchase. Um, they would, we would have it on your agenda other, un- under other business. And y- we would write a staff review that talks about this location, character, extent. I know it seems kind of loose right now, but I've got some language that I can use to help beef up and help you understand what, what they're being looked at, or what. What the act is asking for. There. And then prior to authorization for that. Um. Expenditure, um, that your, your input would come be prior to authorization for that to happen. So it wouldn't be an after the fact, it would re- review, it'd happen before any, anything happens.
So if you're on a, a project basis. Rather than, uh, the whole shebang.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That. That to me makes. Makes a lot of sense. And the. My concern was at the weight of. What the planning commission had to say would be lost, but. If it, if the island come before the planning commission. It would not be lost.
Right. It's something historically Delta has not used. In fact, MSU, um, extension has an article called The Forgotten Law. Planning Commission Review of Capital Expenditures. So it's something that I'm not sure that every municipality has high on its radar, but it's something we could and should be doing all the time. For these reviews. So, um. I, I mean, I'd like to start, but we're, we're a little, like I said, we're, we should have been doing these things, so we'll get on it and moving forward, we'll have a pretty good. Uh, pipeline for these projects.
Uh, one other question. Excuse me. I'm waiting for somebody to say, no, you can't keep your mouth shut. Uh. So would be limited to projects. Uh, rather than equipment. Is that correct?
Correct.
So before we dealt with any like purchases of fire trucks and stuff like.
Yeah, I'm just purchased, yeah, it's. Sorry, it's a, it's structures, it's places, it's property, playground. I think a fire truck, I'm not sure if a fire truck, I would have to let you know. I just don't know if a fire truck would fall into that.
Yeah.
It is.
Ambulances.
You looked at him, okay.
Fire trucks, yeah, equipment. I mean, I don't care. Let me have something to say about. Yeah, that's what we went over the, how much money we put in to the cigar box.
Right, because it takes so long to get.
For future purchases.
Yep. Yep. Any questions about this?
No, it sounds like a magical move.
So, um, I plan on sharing this with the township board at its meeting next week under their work session, or they call it committee of the whole. Um, and then if they are agreeable to it. What I think has to happen, and I did meet with the township attorney last week, is a slight tweak to our ordinance just to reestablish the assignment. On the C I P. And, um, there's no change needed to implement the section sixty-one reviews, other than, uh, culturally here at work. Orienting everyone to the other department heads to understand that this is a thing that we have to do. But we, we'll, we'll do that. And yeah, and then I'll, at some point, share. Uh, you know, after working with the directors, I'll have a better idea of like what projects have received reviews or then what's, what's on the pipeline, we'll get those scheduled.
Mister, Mister Chair, I have a question. Um. I know it's not necessary, but would it help you, Peter, if there's a formal vote in support of that direction?
Um, if you're willing to make recommend, vote on a recommendation, that would be helpful and share with the board.
I'd make that motion.
Support. Moved and supported. Any further discretion?
I think she might need some clarity on what the motion is and she's making that.
Okay, that, that. Good. The motion is to support the, uh. Uh, proposed alteration in the process for. Uh, C I P. Uh, as described by the director.
Okay, we good, Sarah?
Hopefully.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Hey, next on the agenda are project updates.
More me talking. All right, um, I'm, I'm gonna run through a couple of things with you real briefly. Um, lots of projects going on at the township are really excited. It's been, uh, it's still a lot though. Um, a lot of new business, you know, we got. Variety of new businesses are kind of on the precipice of opening. Uh, there's food trucks all over the township this summer, mostly at Horox, but in other places, we've got seven of them licensed. Um, new projects that like the Jiffy Lube is completely open. I'll give you all saw that, that was a project that came through the playing commission. McLaren has ongoing construction down there. They want to be open by this fall. Best Buy is getting closer to being finished over here. At Delta Crossings, the Tailgaters store looks more like an actual store with a canopy and everything, so I know they want to open still this year. But we are closer than ever on approving the site plan for the Bass Pro Shops retailer over here, so the eighty-six thousand square foot new retail building. Um. I mentioned earlier, Commissioner Mudry mentioned, mentioned the improvements to Marketplace Boulevard. They did do the, um. Some of the markings on the pavement that were years overdue. It was kind of ca- chaos frankly. Um, but they're getting closer to being able to turn that road over. Right now, North Marketplace Boulevard, Northwest Saginaw is still a private road. So, and that's a dereliction of duty on the, you know, the ownership of that pro- property. But we're really trying to get, um, ahead of all that and get it rectified. Um, because the new Bass Pro, if you remember back to whatever, I think that was October, was conditioned on. Um, getting the road made public, getting all the utilities turned over. In the chaos that was the lawsuit at Delta Crossings, a lot of that didn't get done, and that's a, a unique circumstance. It's hard to say we did anything wrong necessarily, but, uh, we are going back and getting all that stuff rectified before moving on with this next development.
Do, is there a location for that too?
For the Bass Pro would be north of where they're building the Best Buy. Yeah, so right there along the highway. So a lot of master plan we talked about, um, I wanted to talk about also the M dot project, so. I know Commissioner Elsinger has heard a ton about this as she serves on the Corridor Improvement Authority Board. But the, and you may have seen in so- social media or even, um, might run in the LSJ maybe tonight, tonight or tomorrow. M dot's proposing a project, and if you've heard me say this, I apologize for repeating myself, but. From Madonna Drive just west of Broadbent to the interstate, they're looking at, um, I'll call it a boulevard, the boulevard project, installing a boulevard there. Bottom line is what it would do is it would restrict left turns. There are variations on a theme of how the boulevard gets installed and how people turn and where they turn. There's a lot of details to work out on that, and I won't say that it's not complicated. There are a lot of different stakeholders involved in that process. I, I will, I do want to establish, this is not a township project, it's an M dot project. We are trying to fill the gap on communication. So the M dot's gonna have an open house meeting in this room on Tuesday, the seventeenth. We've done quite a bit of work to try to help publicize that meeting. More than anything, I just want to ensure that people's eyes are getting on this. West Saginaw impacts everybody. I mean, even people outside of the region, that you're, you're, so, um. Wh- what design alternative they select is, they're, right now, they're in this early preliminary engineering phase. This is the time for public comment. I haven't personally worked on an M dot project before, so, um, I wanna get as many people involved that they need to see these plans. Because if they have thoughts about, um, you know. Blocking a road or a drive here and having to, to turn left, you've got, you know, it's turn right, you've got to turn left and. To turn left, you've got, you know, to turn right, you've got to turn left, and there's a lot of options that are on the table. But this is the time, if um if we're gonna share input, this is when it has to happen while they're still putting the plans together because once. I mean, there is that moment that once you hit it, it's just gone. I mean, that's my impression, and I think that's probably gonna wait the way it's gonna play out. So we're really just trying to help facilitate public engagement and input on these plans. Right now, they're, you know, they've got three design alternatives that. The CIA board that met at four o'clock in this room have been going over in great detail. That's what the me on the meeting on the seventeenth. M dot is gonna present. I think they're gonna do two different presentations during that time, but then their staff will be here to answer questions. Provide additional information. Like I said, we did this pretty significant mailing and um social media campaign. Um and email blast to, I I don't, you know, my mailing went to about twelve hundred people. The I've been working with Grand Ledge, that went to about twenty-one hundred people. So we've tried to get as many people uh eyes on this as possible, so. June seventeenth in this room, four to seven, and I'll talk more about it. And I will keep this group. Um abreast of what's going on, we can share the design alternatives. Um I was thinking after this public meeting will be a good time, then we'll have some input. From a couple of different groups and we'll have some input from the CIA. The CIA board does have an engineering firm called Benesh. Um that's helping us vet this and making sure that M dot is exploring all options, not leaving anything on the table. That kind of thing, so. We're getting there, but um and. I don't want to miss this, but that project's not proposed until twenty twenty-eight. So we have some time, but I mean, you know, it's June already, so. Things happen quickly, especially in the, once they've allocated these dollars, unless they have a plan, they're gonna be off to the races and there'll be no more asking the locals what. What they want to see. Uh we talked about that, we talked about, sorry, I just want to make sure I've talked about everything. We have a new member, I think everybody met David Howell. Playing commission is at full strength, so. Uh the meeting for June twenty-third, we do not have any business, so no official application for the twenty-third, so I would propose canceling that meeting. And we'll send notice out on that. Sarah, next to me here, sent you all an ethics policy. I don't know how often or when this group may have seen that. I I understand we've been doing the ethics policy for years. At least in my time here, we hadn't sent them out, so um with the four boards and commissions that I work with, we sent all those out. If you could get us back those, whether it's a hard copy. A photo of it on your phone, scan, whatever's most convenient to you, get those back to us at your earliest convenience and we will log them. That's all I've got. Planning staff, anything else I missed? Thank you for indulging my rambling.
Thank you, Peter. Uh is there anybody from the public that would like to comment uh on items that were not on the agenda? Uh if so, please come to the podium. Seeing none, uh any additional comments, Peter?
No, sir.
Any comments from planning commissioners? Mr. Mudry.
The boulevard. That way more complicated than I ever thought, working with the M dot engineers. I thought it was gonna be kind of a simple deal, not, not. And what really complicated things is when you had to consider semi trucks.
Yep, uh yeah.
Okay, that was the biggie. And talking to the engineers, I said, well, you know, if you really want to sell this. What you tell everybody is the option is we do roundabouts down Saginaw. I said, you'll be okay. Okay, uh next thing is the C I P. I've been on the C I P for sixteen years. Okay, I was actually considering stepping down and letting a new member go through that process. Mainly because it's a great process to go through. You meet each department head. You can interact with them, you and you kind of get an idea of of the needs of the the township. And one of the things Peter pointed out is, we didn't really have a firm grasp on the budgeting or the money involved. You know, how do we prioritize really not knowing how expensive things are? And one thing I I found out in. Government and large corporations is you can't look at everything as you personally have to write the check. Okay, it's a bigger deal. Okay, there's deeper pockets. Okay, and that was just one of the realizations that I had to come through when I was on that committee. But uh since you're going to kind of change the recipe a little bit, I don't really have to step down. I um but it's a it's a C I P is a great opportunity for everybody. And it looks like we're all gonna be able to have input on that, and that's that's a good thought. And I am done.
Can I speak to the truck traffic or it, because it is a major complicating factor? I mean, it's not a complicating factor, it's the factor. Um not to mention the, you know, the personal vehicles. Right now, the proposal is for trucks. Um getting off the highway here, they would have to go all the way down. Sorry, I don't mean to characterize it, so I don't don't read into the the way I say that. Uh they would go all the way past Broadbent and there would be a turnaround where the M dot would actually have to purchase land. On the south side of West Saginaw Highway, and there'd be a turnaround for them to come back the other way. So it's um it is complicated. And it's, there's a lot of moving parts to it. There's a lot of people, they have different needs on the corridor, so that. But that is definitely the, the truck traffic is obviously a very high priority because it's a a a primary route there.
Was that, excuse me, was that designed uh consideration due to safety concern?
I believe so, yeah.
I think that was priority one.
Yeah, and they they aren't able to make, there's not enough right away for these trucks to make the turn. The um the like the mid, I am not a engineer and I don't speak that language very well.
And the easiness basically now exists to on the south side, so that's a huge constraint.
Yeah, because the trucks have to be in the in the left lane to make make the turn, there there's a carve-out. On the shoulder.
Right.
Okay, when you see the prints, that's what that is, that's a car out, so the semi can make the turn.
Yeah, yeah.
So my plan was to bring this a- after they have the public meeting, I think we'll have a better idea of kind of some of the community issues, general community issues. Then bring that to the commission with the alternatives for for review or just input. It doesn't have to be, um you're not making. You don't have any, you're the advisory, you know, in this capacity, of course, but I think it's a val- you know, it's a valuable project to get your eyes on.
It's just like here, recommendations.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thanks.
It's back to C I P. Uh was prompted by a Commissioner Mudry statement. Um if we see the items as they come to the agenda one by one. Um out with planning commission of the big picture.
Oh, in terms of all the improvements planned for the year, we can share that list.
That might be.
Yeah, they will still compile the list of projects planned. Uh it would, I'll just end up sharing it as a communication with this group.
Mr. Chair. Give us a much more balanced uh view on things because we can evaluate the projects on their merits. Uh and then the combination of the the merit evaluation with money. Are given equal weight in what we finally adopt, rather than, like I said, some vague synthesis process that isn't explicit. We can recommend something as being best for the township. Even if it's expensive, well, that's a discussion to be had, we'll put the two of them together, but we're purely evaluating on the merits, which I think is a really good thing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If you and the other commissioners would indulge me for a minute, I know the director introduced me, um but I wanted to formally say. That I considered it an honor and privilege to be here and to serve on the planning commission and um. Since I was eighteen years old, I've always worked in a field where um you're always serving others. And uh starting at eighteen, um going into the Coast Guard. And eventually going into the medical field and then uh going into uh the army. Um had a thirty-two-year total career in the military and about the last uh. Fifteen, twenty years, um it was the milit- the medical end of the military. And uh so my my dad was uh in the air force for thirty years, starting in World War Two. And um one of the things that he taught my brothers and I was that service is a privilege. And so I do consider it um an honor and a privilege to be here as as a member of the planning commission. I'm gonna do my best to catch up and uh try to, you know, get my feet underneath me and uh understand more about. The planning process and uh and how it affects all the different uh departments here in the township. And how it affects the community as a whole. So uh I wanted to say hello and I plan on, you know, this being a long and fruitful relationship.
Welcome, welcome.
You are truly welcome. Uh and thank you for your prior service, but you are truly welcome here. And I think I speak for the rest of the commission that. We're all pretty much at your disposal for any questions or help that you might need to to get up to speak.
Well, I I promise I won't text anybody at four o'clock in the morning. But I I also want to let the other commissioners know that um I'm old school, I don't carry my phone around with me. You know, I I I went forty years without carrying a phone. And uh, you know, I carried a phone when my kids were young, but uh now that they're all adults, um. I don't carry a phone, so feel free to leave me a voicemail if you're trying to get a hold of me. And uh I usually get back to, you know, to folks during the evening.
Now, David, you are not old school completely. You don't have a flip phone.
Well, I I just got this iPhone uh four, so.
I look at it as an computer that just happens to have a phone up with it.
There you go. Yeah, I I tell people I carry my brain in the pocket now, so.
Schedule it.
Hey, any further comments from commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Supported, I'm not even gonna ask for discussion, all in favor? Opposed? He is adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.